Good morning and welcome to the April twentieth, two thousand seventeen zoning board of adjustment meeting. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the agenda, there are speaker request forms to the left of the dais. Please fill out the request with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak to and hand it to the secretary. At this time, we would also like to ask that if any member of the audience has a cellphone or other electronic device, that you either turn it off or turn the ringer to silent. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway so that the meeting is not disrupted. Public hearing on item one is now open, approval of the March ninth, two thousand seventeen zoning board of adjustment meeting minutes.
Would approve.
Steve made the motion to approve, Galen seconded that motion. Any comments, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number two.
Item number two is variance request to allow a six-foot-high fence in the second front yard for property located at one thousand Fur Drive. Take you through some slides, property zone, medium-density residential, it is a corner lot. The Rapid City Municipal Code takes into account corner lots with fences by allowing a six-foot-high fence in the second front yard, which would be this front yard on Sycamore Street, with a ten-foot minimum required setback. The applicant is requesting to reduce that ten-foot setback to zero feet. All right, aerial view of the property, there's a single-family dwelling located on the property and the neighborhood is predominantly single-family homes. Future land use is urban neighborhood. And a major street plan, it's a distance away, but East Fairmont Boulevard would be an arterial street to the north with the property located in that area. Site plan submitted by the applicant, it shows a red dotted line extending out from the front of the house. Six-foot-high fence being setback at the setback of the house is where the six-foot-high fence should start in the first front yard. The issue is with the fence in the second front yard along the sidewalk, along Sycamore Street, and then extending back to the existing fencing in the back. Public Works staff has indicated that the proposed six-foot-high fence does encroach into the site triangle. You're coming up to Fur Drive and Sycamore Street, it's an uncontrolled T-intersection, so putting any sort of obstructions within that area would, will, may cause traffic issues. Site photos submitted by the applicant showing the area where the fence is going to be at that garage is where the fence would begin in the front yard. And then this is looking at the side yard. And where the fence would extend from the garage on the side yard. Elevation of the fence, six-foot opaque cedar fence. Staff photos taken a couple days ago, looking at the property. This is looking from Fur Drive to the west at Sycamore Street. So imagine having a fence extending in this area. And the visibility issues that would cause. This is looking from Sycamore Street, looking down towards the property. This is where the existing chain-link fence in their backyard in that area, so something coming across here. Another view of that area. Looking up towards, there is an elevation change, Sycamore Street does rise in elevation, moving away from the property. And then this is looking along Fur Drive. And from Fur Drive, looking at the intersection with Sycamore Street. And here you see the neighbor on the opposite side of Fur Drive, they do have a chain-link fence in their second front yard. And you can see there's clearly no visibility issues with that. So if zoning board does deem that to be suitable for a fence to be located for this property, then staff would recommend that the stipulation be added, that it be thirty percent opaque, so, or thirty percent provide visibility, so something like chain-link or wrought iron to provide that visibility. Or the applicant could construct a fence in compliance with the Rapid City zoning ordinance, which allows a six-foot-high fence ten feet off the property line. And with that, staff is recommending that the variance request be denied. Are there any questions for staff?
Thank you Fletcher. I've got some, I thought the Skyline Pines one was number...
It's number three, I believe they wrote the wrong number on that.
Anyway, the, I just want to make sure that if anybody wants to speak to this item, please raise your hand, come up. I don't think I have any requests for this one, though.
The applicant is in the audience and would be available for any questions.
I see one hand that went up, would you like to speak to this particular? No, this is for a fence, okay.
Yes.
Come, come up here. Did you get those? My name is Darrell Davidson, I'm the owner of the property.
Thank you.
I gave Fletcher a couple other proposals, ideas too, because I was, was going to work with the city however they want, I just wanted extra. It was like six hundred and forty square foot of property. I wanted to get some of it back, but I was gonna make, I wanted to make other triangles to allow the site to be, you know, better visibly seen, so. I don't know if anybody's gonna work with me on that or not, if they, I mean, if there's other things I can do to make it so I can have a six-foot fence, but just a little bit more of that property back towards the top of it. I'm just requesting that.
Thank you. Any, if perhaps you could stay close and some of the commissioners might have questions, comments? I'll start it with, just for discussion, we had a past item maybe a year or so ago with a similar deal where we'd had concern on West Chicago Street about the site triangle at, I think it's forty-fourth. And that, we weren't willing to give up the six, you know, to allow a six-foot opaque fence along that second front yard, but they went with the four-foot opaque and transitioned up to a six-foot after the ten-foot zone off the...
So that's, that's feasible then?
As far as I know, that would be allowed, Vicki, maybe you could confirm that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and if the applicant would concur with putting a four-foot opaque fence along the second street and then ten-foot back along that rear lot line, keeping it four feet, transitioning to the six-foot, that would not require a variance.
Right, right.
Then that would work.
Right.
And that would still give you that enclosed backyard and, and a higher degree of privacy than a chain-link fence.
Right, right. Is there any other options where I could, like, towards the back end where, because I don't, I mean, I guess I don't know the site triangle exactly is encroaching, for sure, but I'm just trying to see what I can get, like, you know, if I can go take a, come to the ten-foot setback and then go very sharp triangle or diagonal, so at least get some of the property in the back available? I mean, I can come in as far as you want, I mean, come in a little bit more, I, I don't know what's, what's possible, I'm just, just wondering.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So I, I guess I'll defer to engineering on this, but I, I think Fletcher's site photos really captured the concern with Fur and Sycamore, is it Sycamore Fletcher? Fur and Sycamore with that elevation on that, that side of the property, where someone coming into that intersection, there, it's going to be difficult to allow anything within that firsthand feet to secure that site triangle so that we have that uncontrolled T-intersection without creating some kind of, of traffic conflict. If, if there are options out there and the applicant is, would be willing to look at the four-foot and then potentially some distance, maybe not eliminating the entire ten-foot setback, but something. I, unless you want to start construction next week, I, I would rather see this continued and let us sit down with them with engineering, so we're not trying to engineer this in the middle of a meeting and see if we can't come up with a compromise that would work and, and hopefully maybe even eliminate the need to get the variance, but at least bring you better options, knowing that engineering's had a chance to look at that.
Mr. Chair, can we have engineering opinion on that, please?
Ted?
Thank you. We did look, or I did look at some options that the applicant provided. With the limitations for the site triangle based on our criteria, none of those fit. I mean, it, this site triangle obstructs a large portion of this side yard clear to the back of the property. So putting a six-foot fence anywhere in those, within ten feet or within twenty-five feet, is in the site triangle. We would be willing, as Vicki suggested, to sit down and look at those, we could draw some of that stuff out, scale it out, and see if there's any other things that may meet code requirements and not create the hardship. But to try to do that here now is tough, but we did look at those other options and they just don't fit. It takes a large chunk of that out there, out of the yard, and a six-foot security fence just obstructs the, you know, limits that, there's nothing that we could support from a traffic safety or code allowances.
Then I don't see any reason to continue it on, that's fine. I, I'll go with that then, what I have.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
We'll continue to work with the applicant so that if we can come up with that compromise, the four-foot and the six-foot, and stay out of that site triangle, so that he, he does have the availability to get that six-foot in the maximum area and yet negate the need for the variance. Our recommendation stands, we recommend to deny as requested.
Okay, I've got a few commissioners up, Kurt, would you still like to add something, ask anything?
Yeah, I would just agree with Vicki that I don't think we need to engineer it here. But I'm just wondering if, you know, site triangle diagrams were drawn up and... Okay, and, you know, if he has other options that, you know, you could modify your diagram to, to make sure it works, so. I guess that was my only comment.
Karen?
So my, my only question is, are you recommending that we continue this or deny it?
Deny.
Okay, my motion then will be to deny this and hopefully the applicant can work with the city and come up with something that will be beneficial.
Karen, okay. Karen made the motion to deny, Commissioner Sullivan made the motion to, or seconded that motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If we could get the motion maker to amend the recommendation, that the recommendation is to deny based on site triangle encroachment.
That would be my motion at this point, so make it legal.
That worked for you as well? Okay, motion maker and second agreed to that, add to their motion, deny based on site triangle issues. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of denying this application, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Now around to item three.
Item three is a variance request to reduce the minimum required lot size for parcel zoned Park Forest District from three acres, which is the minimum required lot size, to one point three zero eight acres and two point five 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 acres. And has also submitted a preliminary subdivision plan, which is on the planning commission agenda, to create two lots. Property is located at seventeen seventeen Peavens Parkway. Here we have the zoning map showing that there is large areas on Park Forest District. All the lots in the area are between three point zero three and five point six two acres in size. This one is currently three point six eight, I believe, acres in size and is currently in compliance with the zoning ordinance. We did, we have received two phone calls in opposition to this variance request. One of them stating that this sets a precedence with everyone having three-acre lots and larger granting. You know, the, the reason they bought up there is the large lots and the protecting the skyline. Here we have an aerial view of the property, there is a single-family dwelling with an attached garage located on the property in compliance with the zoning ordinance. Skyline Drive is identified as a state scenic byway. And the area's future land use is forest conservation. The idea of the Park Forest District and forest conservation is to preserve open space, natural beauty, and open character. Subdividing a lot that is currently in compliance, it's taking away from all those things, it's, it's increasing the densities out there and you're losing that open character and everything else. Skyline Drive is also identified as a collector street on the major street plan. Here's a image of the preliminary subdivision plan, they're looking at dropping a lot in. There's a non-access easement located along Peavens Parkway and Skyline Drive, although it appears there may be an illegal access being used to the current property, which is accessed from Skyline Drive and would need to go away. Site plan showing the location of the existing dwelling, there's an easement running across here. Thirty-foot setback along Skyline, twenty-five along Peavens, creates a smaller building area. Looking from Peavens Parkway at the existing dwelling, reasonable use of the land exists without granting of the variance. This is looking at the area of the, to the, to the north, which is the proposed lot to be created. And you can see there, it is, does have that open character and natural beauty. This is looking across the street on Peavens Parkway, looking back along Peavens Parkway, next house is up high and you see a lot of the, the nature and beauty in the area. Looking along Peavens Parkway back towards Skyline Drive and looking from the intersection of Skyline Drive and Peavens Parkway at, into the property. And looking along, from that intersection, looking back along Peavens Parkway and the gorgeous view to the east that you do get. Here we're looking to the north, and this area is owned by the city and is part of the trail system. And this is looking at the dwelling located at the T-intersection of Skyline Drive and Peavens Parkway. And then to the north along Skyline Drive, and you can see the condition of the road. Adding another lot increases traffic, contributes to road deterioration. And this is looking towards the, the opposite direction, towards the south along Skyline Drive. So we have had two calls of neighbors in opposition for a lot of the reasons supported by the comprehensive plan. Fact that it's forest conservation, Park Forest District requiring, all requiring a minimum of three acre lot size. The fact that Skyline Drive is a scenic state byway and that reasonable use of the land exists. Staff recommends that the variance be denied. That you do have speaker request forms on this item and the applicant is here to answer any questions.
Thanks Fletcher, John, would you like to hear the speakers first, or you're up?
No.
Yes. And one of the other complaints received is that water pressure in the area is very low as it is.
We'll go to Cale Magnabo on this.
Thank you, my name's Cale Magnabo, I own Spurly Consulting and I represent the petitioner. So, yeah, I think, thanks for hearing us today. I'd like to discuss a little bit the geometry of the lot in question relative to the other lots that you see. And, and the reason I, thankfully Fletcher brought up the zoning map for me, is that I'd like to point out that what you see are a lot of very long, thin lots that are used to achieve the three-acre lot size minimum that's required of the Park Forest zoning district. What's specific to the lot in question is that we've got a lot of frontage. And that's unique. It does exist on this lot, but there's really relatively few of these parcels that have significant frontage to either Peavens Parkway or Skyline Drive. Can I advance over to the aerial photo Fletcher? So I believe the question really is, there's a difference between density, which is the Park Forest zoning district has a three-acre lot size minimum, which is used to control density, but there's difference between density and perceived density. What you see are relatively small building envelopes on large three-acre lots. This lot's currently undeveloped, but you'll see a building envelope that'll look like this. Because the back half of these lots are really not subdividable or usable. Granted, they achieve the three-acre lot size minimum, but it's not a piece of ground that's set for future development. The same exists along Skyline Drive. We have lots, but all the lots need to hug up close to the edge of the right away because we have topography constraints either direction. This lot, though, which we've proposed to subdivide, has significant frontage and access in which a structure could be built in a location similar to this. Now when you look at the density, let me, before I get too many lines on this thing, let me clear it off. So we look at the density, we have a house here, here. This lot is platted, at some point may get developed. So you're talking about a housing density that looks like this. When you talk about that sort of housing density, we see a lot of density on the, the east side of Peavens Parkway. And Skyline Drive is gonna meet the spirit of that density. You're not gonna see significantly more density, you're not gonna see density similar to low-density residential in-town lots. There's already a significant amount of density around Lambert Court. And this is going to fit right in with the density you're gonna see after subdivision. Now with regards to the water pressure issues, these, these are items that can be addressed through the public works and the planning process. All of those things are stipulations, the staff report that the water pressure needs to be evaluated, the sewer has to be evaluated, the engineering reports will be drafted, designed. Those items will be addressed as part of the planning process. But I think what I'd really like to leave you with is the idea of we have a density and a perceived density. If these lots were all long rectangular, then you've got, you've got a certain density and a house sitting in the middle of it. If they're more square, then you have a house in the middle, it gives a very open and wide density or perceived density. When you have long skinny lots, the building envelope is realistically in these locations and they're all hugged up right next to the road. Even though they meet the spirit of the ordinance, the property in the back is not, it's not buildable. So with that, I guess I would like to entertain any questions that you had, things you'd like to follow up on?
Thank you, I don't see any questions right away, I'll go to the other speakers. Isaac Almanza?
Hello?
Can you identify yourself?
Isaac Almanza?
Record, thank you.
Yeah. I think Fletcher summed up most of my concerns with the, the lot being split up there. I think that it'll deter from the property values and bring those down. And they set those lots at three to five acres for a reason, I mean, those are state lots, not track home lots. So, yeah, I'm opposed to subdividing up there. And I bought that lot for, you know, so again, that could potentially obstruct my view, I paid a premium for the lot that I bought up there, so. Said there again, I'm opposed to it.
Can you identify where you, what lot you're talking about that you bought?
Pull up the map. There you go, thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenda Williams.
Good morning. My name is Glenda Williams and I live at twenty-six, twenty-seven Skyline Drive. We're the house that's on the intersection of Peavens Parkway and Skyline. And we were notified about the subdivision. It kind of came as a surprise to us last week. And we basically, my husband and I object to this for, for several reasons. We, we're lifelong residents of Rapid City, went to school here, left for thirty years and for our careers and came back when we retired. My husband retired, I'm still working. And we came back to bury our fourth parent in Rapid City. Well, we were at Mount View Cemetery and we looked up and we saw houses on Skyline Drive that never was there when we grew up. It was always a place where you got to drive up there and look at the view. It was beautiful. And my husband said, we have a couple hours before the funeral, can we go up there? Because if we ever come back to Rapid City, which was always our goal, we'd like to tell a realtor that's the kind of view we wanted. And when my husband was young, he always told his parents and his grandparents that he wanted to live up there. And they said, no, you'll never live up there. There'll never be houses on Skyline Drive, you know, you're a crazy kid. So anyway, we went up there and we'd come around the corner and the house is for sale. Well, that put a whole big, a big decision on our lives. My husband was retiring in about six months from the government. And I was still working in Washington DC for a trade association and somebody's going to have to quit a job to move back to Rapid City. Well, fast forward six months later, my company let me keep my job. I work in my house. And we have the most beautiful view in Rapid City. We wake up every morning and are very happy to have that. It was a big decision because it's a very expensive house. It's a very expensive place to live with taxes. But what we liked about it is that it was very open. We have wilderness on one side of us. We have a, an unusable lot, like you said. We have four acres almost. And it's straight downhill, but it's all beautiful. Everybody takes care of their yards. It's a beautiful place. It's open. There's so many people that are tourists that come by when we're walking to get our mail, a mile and a half down by the other cemetery. And people are there and they enjoy that area. There's been some things that have changed Skyline, like the new Stonewall Overlook. And that has increased a lot of people driving up on top of the hill to look at the view with their cars over the curb. We've noticed that a lot of the people don't like to get out of their cars at the overlook, so they're, they're just driving down the road a little ways. That's increased what we, we think is drug traffic up there. There's more traffic. But basically, the reason that Skyline Drive is there is so that you can see the views from Skyline. And to have homes up there, first of all, we would never have wanted homes up there, but we had an opportunity to buy one. If we had built that home, you wouldn't have been able to see it from below. We're very careful about not leaving our lights on at night in the front. We never put our lights on outside so that you can't see the house at night. That's one of the things that we're very adamant about because it is so visible. But we object because we just think that this should be an open area. It shouldn't be a lot of small houses. And we, we've noticed things like water problems. Our driveway was replaced because of runoff from Skyline because there's no curb and gutter. We have very low water pressure. Replaced a lot of fixtures, thinking they were just bad fixtures, but it hasn't, it hasn't helped. The other concern I have is that the current people are using another driveway right off of Skyline. And when you come down Skyline to go to Peavens Parkway, that's, it's a downhill slope. People come speeding down there and it's a very dangerous intersection. There's been times when I've been outside and I hear people, you know, screaming on their brakes to stop because someone's coming off Peavens to turn onto Skyline. And there's been many near accidents on that intersection. Having another house there and having, using another driveway off of Skyline is another dangerous thing that we've noticed since we've moved there. The other thing I'm concerned about, if they make that lot smaller, the current owners right now have a lot of things out there. They've got a, a big RV, they've got many, many vehicles for their construction company, they've got cars. They've got a shed, they've got a boat, construction equipment. If their lot's made smaller, where are they going to put all of their things? We, we can't even leave our car outside at night. We have to put it in the garage because that's what our covenants say. We can't have outbuildings. We can't have any other things sitting on our lot. So I'm just concerned about the density of what that's going to look like for the people that enjoy Skyline and what that lot is going to be like with another house. And, and the fact that it does distract from the view and possible other water issues that we have. So thank you for letting me give my opinion. We do, we do object.
Thank you. Dennis Graff.
I know some of you, I, I don't know others. I live in that lot just immediately south to the Guthries. Let me tell you for starters, the Guthries are nice people. We live on the Skyline Pines subdivision, perhaps a subdivision that should have never been built. But that's where we live and we are privileged to be there. I, I regret being here. I've never been in this room before. And I regret being here with neighbors, neighbors that will still be my neighbors after today. I'm not going to be there forever. I might be gone in a couple of years. Just historically, I was, I was very lucky. Because the reason I actually have my lot, which is somewhat the pick of the litter up there, is because of a dispute of two other neighbors. And by that dispute, one of the original lots never got sold or built on. And I came along late and was able to get that lot next to the Guthries. But I want to offer some information to you mainly. I'm not going to stick around to hear your vote. I just want to offer this information for now and the future. As you were told and you know if you live in this community. Real question about whether we ever built up on Skyline Drive. I didn't expect it either. I didn't expect to get this phone call either. I apologize. It is a little early for a client, isn't it? But I was going to share with you that that name, Peavens Parkway, will mean something over the years. Not because it's the name of a street, but it's the name of one of the two people who really did a lot of work up there. Pev Evans. Pev's the highest point. And then you had Joe Butler, who worked a little farther down the road. But you know, they came up with these ideas on how to develop up there. And we can't go back and revisit them then, but, but they came up with this idea of Skyline Pines. And Skyline Pines had a couple of things to it. Number one, these would be large lots. Perhaps they met with you to actually sell that subdivision. And secondly, there'd be covenants to protect those lots. Ironically, if we could put this up for just one second. So you see, I'm in the lot immediately to the south, okay? And I'm, and I'm right at the top. Obviously, you build at the top to get the best view. And ironically, there's a lower area. And I think I've got enough room if I wanted to, to try to split that lot. Probably get another acre, another nice view, I suppose, but it's down below my house. How long will I stay there? I've been there since 2004. I did everything on that lot. When I built that place, Shad's, Shad Construction built it. I was going down to Durango and I said, before you dig anything, please take some pictures. I want to remember it before we put a house there. What I'm trying to get to is this. There was a concept and a belief there that if we're going to build on Skyline, we would do it with a lot of protection for these large lots. Now, some of that protection's gone. And as I said, I want to give you historical information. It's your vote, it's your community. I won't be there forever. But you know, all of us are covered by covenants except one. There's just one lot. And that's the Guthrie lot. Now, Pev Evans isn't here. But what happened was either by omission or by desire not to be covered by the covenants, the Guthries did not sign for the covenants. So some of the things you've heard about vehicles and boats and motorhomes. And that takes place because they're the only place in our community that aren't covered by the covenants. And there's nothing we can do about that. And long ago, live and let live, you know, that's just the way it was. But now as we deal with this, I just want you to realize that not just the Guthrie lot and frankly, my lot and some lots as you go down Peavens Parkway, there are some ways to actually add houses to some of these lots. As you go around the curve and you're more on the south side, there are some steep lots. And they can probably get access, in fact, I think one did, from Skyline Drive. They never built up there. But it's a long, narrow lot, but they could actually have another house farther down if they just had another driveway that came down, came down to a separated lot to Peavens. This place could change a lot over the years. And I want to tell you, if somebody buys my home and I'm not here, I'm hoping they don't come back to you and say, you know that old Graff property? We've got enough room here to put another lot on the lower part of it. I, I, I don't have anything else to say. I object. I hate the fact that, you know, the Guthries have a desire and they've done some work to present this to you. This would be the only lot that would have that division. And secondly, and secondly, over the years, we're going to live with these decisions and one by one, people will come back to different boards and they'll have different requests. But this was all built for a purpose. It was the exception that let people build on Skyline Drive. And as I said, I don't have any future vested interest. I'll be gone in a couple of years. But for this community, please protect it as best you can. And would the world live on? Could a house be put on the Guthrie property? You can see it could be. Certainly, there's enough room there to put another house. Would it be a good idea? I sure don't think so, but as I said, you're going to make your decision and I'm going to have some regrets about coming here today. Because I'm going to still live next to my neighbor. But for the sake of the community and for the sake of where we're at in ten or twenty years, I just don't think this is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Got a light up from Galen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I object to this. I, I think it's a non-starter in my mind. So I, I do recognize the lots. The lot here is different than the neighbors, but, you know, just because you can build, it doesn't mean you should. I think there's just too many houses the way it is, so. I would make a motion to uphold the denial.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
If the motion maker could include, as cited by the criteria noted in the project report?
As cited by the criteria in the project report.
So Galen made the motion to deny the variance to reduce minimum required lot size based on the information in the project report. Was there a second?
Yes.
Mike Klosny seconded that? And Mr. Guthrie, do you have something to add?
Before there was a decision made, I would like just the opportunity to talk to you folks. You know, we've heard the Williams and we've heard Dennis and Isaac come up here and talk about, you know, their long-term residence in South Dakota. Well, sending, my wife and I are long-term residents of South Dakota. We were born and raised here. Spent twenty-three years in the military on active duty, came to Rapid City and retired here. And we were one of the first residents up on, in the Skyline Pines subdivision when the development came. Actually, made an offer on a lot before they had the final plot. And we have been exceptional stewards of the land on the Skyline Pines. We planted probably over the last sixteen years, you know, a hundred and thirty trees up there that have matured and that are growing. That, the lot that we're on is, was bald basically, and we've been putting variety of trees. So that, you know, through the beetle crisis, we sprayed the hundred and fifty pound rose pines that we had there. We, you know, tried to keep the, the natural beauty. And what you, what you hear from our neighbors, and we respect their opinions, but there's a thing called selfish and selfless. And they're kind of being selfish in that they want to have this beauty of the area and it's mystical. There's bald eagles that fly around up there. There's mountain lions that come through. There's deer. I think the Williams even told me that there was a mountain gill and a ewe that came out by their place. And what this would do, if we could get this subdivision or this lot and this variance through, would afford somebody else, maybe one of your relatives or one of your children or you later on down the road to enjoy that pristine beauty in what we have. And anything that we would eventually do up there on this lot would be consistent with what we have done in the, you know, as good stewards of the land. And it wouldn't detract from property values or views because those things have already been set in place with the hundred-foot setback off of Skyline. And where the house would go, I think there's probably a thirty-foot topographical elevation decline from Skyline. If we were going to put a house on the subdivided lot, we wouldn't have a Skyline Drive access. We would have one shared access off of Peavens Parkway. And actually, the Williams driveway and Dennis Graff's driveway are probably the two most blind driveways in Rapid City. Actually, the Williams have a berm, I believe is probably in the right of way, built up so that when you're coming over the hill, you can't see their car coming out of their driveway until they're past the berm. Dennis is on a blind, his driveway is at the corner of a blind rock cliff coming around the curve on Skyline. And in our lifetime, in your lifetime, somebody, I'll guarantee you that there's a very, very high probability that somebody will be killed at that intersection. So we wouldn't do that. We would come off of Peavens Parkway on our driveway and use that as a shared access. The, I don't believe that there is a, a water pressure issue up there. We don't have it. We have to turn our water pressure down. So, but the fire department and the city would know all those kind of, kind of things. So I'd just leave you with the thought of if there was one piece, and I kind of disagree with Dennis, but if there's one property up there that would be, that this could achieve, that we could achieve a, a, another home on without doing any detriment to the aesthetics and the beauty and the pristiness of the area, it'd be the lot that we're on. And one of the reasons, main reasons that we're pursuing this is that we have aged parents and we want the opportunity, if need be, to have a second residence there that we could care for our parents so that they wouldn't have to go into a nursing home or an assisted living. And that's one of our goals. And in doing so, if that happened and there was a, a home there, then it would afford somebody else later on down the line the opportunity to be a part of this community, whereas everybody else that got theirs doesn't really want that. They want theirs. They don't want to have, allow anybody else the opportunity to have that chance. So I'll leave you with that.
Thank you. John?
I'm not sure who can answer this, but do the covenants of the subdivision prevent further subdividing of the properties? Dennis probably would have known.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I, I believe what Dennis did clarify is that this particular property is not
Not in the subdivision. I know that.
Not in the subdivision and that they're not allowed to further subdivide.
Balance of the lots, if they're prevented from subdivided within the subdivision.
Having worked with Pev when he was putting the Having worked with Pev when he was putting this together, and reminds you, the city's not a party to the covenants, nor do we enforce it, but he assured us that there would, steps would be taken so that there would be no further subdivision specifically based on the fact that this, that Skyline Drive is a South Dakota state scenic byway. And there was a lot of hesitation to allow the densities as existing today.
Yeah, I remember.
Okay. Steve?
Karen Bowman and I could go back and talk about history on this. We were there when the discussion came up about building up there, and there was opposition like you've never seen before. And then a group came out and decided we're going to preserve some of it. And I thought we, Karen and I had talked, I thought we had preserved more. But the talk back then was five and 10 acre lots because of what everybody's talking here and because of the backlash. I'm surprised that we have three and four acre lots up there. And I went up and I drove it the other day. A lot of places that I used to be able to pull off and look out are gone now. There's houses sitting there. It's, to me, I was actually part of the pro, yes, let's build some houses up there. I remember those days and the heated discussions that went on. And I'm almost sorry I was part of that after having gone up there and taken a look at it again. But when you buy up there and you buy those acres, you know what you're buying into now. And we had talked about, well, it's going to start with fives or tens and go to threes and fours and twos and ones, and that's what I see happening now. And I can tell you, I won't be part of it. And I understand why they want to do what they're going to do, but we had these discussions and Karen and I can tell you, you know, there was people threatening you back in those days, you know, that's how bad it got. But my vote will be to preserve it as it is. Thank you.
Karen?
Thank you. And I agree with Steve, obviously, there was a lot of discussion at the time on building up there. And I personally probably didn't agree to build anything. I don't remember now, but I just think this is an area that has always been an oasis in the city, you know, a place that people could go up and, and look out and, and see the beauty of the Black Hills without traveling very far. And to start subdividing it, it just doesn't, you know, sit right with me. So I obviously agree with the motion on the, on the floor. I do have a question, and it probably isn't relative to the discussion necessarily, but they had two driveways to get into this property, is that legal?
No, there is a non-access easement located along Skyline Drive.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Vicki.
So we did, Mr. Guthrie came in and met with us, and I really do appreciate that he took that step to disclose everything. And we shared with him that, you know, that is a gravel driveway, I believe, and that it was not appropriate to use that because of that non-access easement and its connection to Skyline Drive. So I believe it's the intent that that will no longer be used, as maybe Mr. Guthrie could confirm that. But it would be a code violation if it was used and the city's code enforcement division could take action.
Okay. Thank you.
Rachel?
Yeah, I guess I just have a couple of questions. One was, is there anything preventing them from having a small, second building on their current lot without subdividing? I don't know if that's, Vicki, if you can answer that?
So currently in Rapid City, you can only have one principal structure per parcel of land in a residential district. So you get to have one house. We had brought forward for discussion several years ago, the idea of doing a caretaker's unit in the city limits. That did not go over well with this community. Pennington County does have a provision that if you have an aging parent and you want to care for them on your property, you have to do so in temporary housing with doctor's orders, and it has to be removed immediately after it's no longer needed. Rapid City did not support that provision in more of an urban area. And so to date, you could not get a building permit for a second residence on this land.
Okay. Thank you. And then my other comment is to Mr. Guthrie, you know, I think you have a very valid point about, you know, this being a place of privilege. And I think that's a very important point, that, you know, being up there, having that lot and all the lots around it, it is, it is a point of privilege. And that it kind of grinds against me that, you know, it's inaccessible to other people. But I think the bigger point is that it's, by subdividing, you're, you're creating, and I think everyone else has commented on this too, you're actually taking away the privilege of other people who are coming up to that area to enjoy it. And so while most of us can't live up on Skyline, and you guys have this privilege of living up on Skyline, and that's fantastic for you, the rest of us want to enjoy it too. And by subdividing it, you actually take away the privilege of more of the community and tourists. And I think that's kind of where I was thinking about that. But thank you, that's all my comments.
I'm seeing no other lights up. We have a motion on the floor to deny the variance by Galen, seconded by Mike. Is there further discussion or questions on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? The motion carries. I think that's our last item on zoning board of adjustment. I'd look for a motion to adjourn the zoning board of adjustment.
Second.
Karen motioned, Steve seconded that motion. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll move right into the planning commission meeting for April 20th, 2017. Same requests regarding speaker request forms. If you have an item you wish to speak to, please get it in. And also on cell phones. We'll start with the consent calendar. Items one through eight have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision. Are there any items one through eight that staff wants removed?
Items six and seven, please.
Okay. Any items one through eight that planning commission would like removed? And any items one through five that any of the audience would like removed? All right. Look for a vote then, or a motion, sorry, on approving the consent calendar items one through five. Commissioner Sullivan moves. Commissioner Bowman seconds. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item six.
Mr. Chair, if we could take items six and seven together, please?
Sure.
There was an error by the paper in the publication of these items, and so since that publication requirement has not been met, we need to continue these to your next meeting, which would be May 4th, and that is our recommendation.
We'll continue till May 4th.
Steve made the motion to continue. Mike seconded that motion. Six and seven? Okay. All those in favor of continuing these two items, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight. Karen?
Thank you. I just had a, I don't know if it was a comment or a question on item eight. In that area, thanks Kelly, in that area, there's, I think it was in your staff report, mentioned that the multifamily housing had gone up 60% within the Highway 16 area. And I guess my only question was on that is, do you see more of that? Is it going to continue? I mean, there's a lot of apartments in that area.
So Mr. Chair, since we sit and visit with consultants on a regular basis as to what might be coming down the road, I guess my, the best guess on that is yes.
Oh, thanks.
I was going to say, I can't really tell you that. All I do is look at the building permits that have already come in for 2016.
Okay.
So everything that I compiled here was on existing permits. So I honestly haven't even started looking at 2017 permits for next year.
Okay. I just know that I, a lot of people have approached me and said, you know, made that comment. There's, there's departments everywhere. You look up on, on both sides of Highway 16 up there and, and their comments to me have been, how many more are there going to be? And I can't answer that question either, but I just thought I'd throw that out and just let people know that that seems to be the area that people are gravitating towards, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Vicki.
So surprisingly enough, as some of these same builders come back in to do a phase two or potentially look at another location, that's the same question I have, is if we've approved 200 apartment units here and 160 over here and 75 over here, aren't we reaching that saturation? And every one of them say no, that they have waiting lists and that they're looking at additional property. And the southeast corner with Elkvale Road extension, Fifth Street being the only true north-south street in the city, that that is a desired location for many different economic groups. And so it allows them to do different valued development, and they continue to project additional multifamily housing within that area of our community.
Okay. I guess there's no comment about that, but thanks, I like the report, so I appreciate that. I'll make a motion to approve or acknowledge item number eight, the socioeconomic report.
Karen made the motion to acknowledge. Steve seconded that motion. Steve also has a light up to speak.
Yeah, I got a question. I see all this, I see the growth everywhere, I see all these apartment houses going up everywhere, I see houses going up everywhere. And yet I look at our population and we don't seem to be growing. If you look at our, the numbers, it says we're stagnant for all these years, yet you talk to realtors, you can't get a house, right? And I mean, it's hard to find a house on the market, get a house on the market. How is that? How can you continue to build every year after year massively, in massive apartments, and not grow? Where are these people coming from?
One of the things that we've, Mr. Chair, sorry, one of the things that we've found and are very excited about it is a lot of our young people that were counted in the census counts would leave, go to college, and never return. They have more opportunity to go to school right here in Rapid City. And with our online availability through the university center, they stay in Rapid City and we have secured more and more jobs to give those starter jobs, those first-time employees, an opportunity. And a lot of these apartment buildings are catering themselves to that younger generation. That will account for some of it. And then too, the numbers may catch up because we're always a little bit behind on those census numbers to see where that growth is. But we've, we are hearing from the developers and from the real estate agents that there's also a demand on single-family homes. So at the end of the day, maybe we will see a bigger increase in our population growth the next time we do that count.
And I will add that we did a population estimate just a couple of months ago that came through. We went up by 1.25% last year, which is a little bit down from the previous years, but still a very stable growth for this area.
Just for numbers, 1.2 would be, what, about 800 and some people?
773, I think, was the total, around there. If you look back, it was on the agenda, I believe, in February.
Yeah, that's a lot of apartments and houses. Motion on the floor to acknowledge from Karen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine.
Item nine is an initial plan development to allow an apartment complex out at Orchard Meadows. This one's been on planning commission agendas since November, I believe, so we're finally getting it going. Property's own medium-density residential district, currently void of any structural development. What is proposed is 13 apartment buildings and a clubhouse leasing office with a total of 172 units. The area is Orchard Meadows, and we've seen a lot of development happening in this area. Future land use shows it as low-density neighborhood or urban neighborhood and employment center on the west portion, right south of that intersection of East Highway 44 and Elkvale to the west. Master plan of the area, commercial located to the north. And single-family and townhomes located in this area, and this area's been identified for an apartment complex. Over here is a lot of the drainage that's being taken care of and green space as part of the development. Here we have a site plan showing the proposed development. Like I said, it's a 172-unit apartment complex with 13 apartment buildings and a clubhouse leasing office. The applicant is requesting two exceptions. The first exception is for the height, to allow a height of 40 feet below 35 feet. What is allowed are three stories. The applicant is proposing a three-story building, and the architectural detail is what accounts for that additional five feet. And with the setbacks and the elevations provided, staff is in support of the exception to the height request. The other exception is to reduce the minimum required rear yard setback along this west property line from 25 feet to 15 feet. To the west of here is a drainage area and flood plain. In addition, there's a proposed access utility road for that drainage located along that west lot line. And the setback provides an additional separation and buffer from that drainage area and that service road. And so staff does not support the exception to decrease the minimum required rear yard setback to 15 feet. And as such, upon submittal of a final plan development, they'd have to show the 25-foot rear yard setback along that west lot line. There, as you've probably noticed, a lot of the times we've continued this item in the past have been due to working through design issues. And we do have it, stipulations in place in the staff report that, and timing on stipulations to coordinate with the Rapid Valley Sanitary District on providing services to the number of units being proposed. I believe it's, they can't account sewer for 112 units, so they could potentially build part of the apartment complex, but then they would need to secure the additional capacity to allow further development of the apartment complex. I believe it's about 112 units that would be. And they do have a covenant or an agreement in place with the Rapid Valley Sanitary District, which is where this property is located. It isn't on city sewer, it's on Rapid Valley Sanitary District. And so they need to coordinate with them on the, bringing forward that development. Took site photos a while ago, so this is looking into the property on a snowy day. And Bowman in the area, looking north at the gas station and restaurant up there and car wash located at 44. Some of the townhome and single-family development taking place. Another look into the property. And with that, staff is recommending that the initial plan development be approved with stipulations noted in the staff report. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Thanks, Fletcher. John?
Is that, are those detention ponds basically for groundwater or surface water?
Ted, you want to chime in?
Maybe now, thank you. There's a detention pond built that's at the southeast corner of the property that is for surface water. There's also the channels, the work that Fletcher was talking about is an element of the Drainage Basin Plan that will convey stormwater through the site. There are no identified groundwater detention ponds. They're basically surface water, although groundwater is very shallow out there.
Was, has that water line been repaired that crossed that property? Maybe north of it, in that same area?
There is. I think you're talking about the one across on the other side of Elkvale, on that Johnson Ranch property. Yes, it has been. That leaks- That leak's been fixed.
Now, have you noticed any, has anybody noticed anything different in the groundwater? Is it going down? That was a considerable leak, if correct.
Yep. Well, depends on how you look at it. It's less than, I mean, it's within the expected leak each for a system our size, but it was a larger leak.
Several million gallons a month.
I can't confirm that, sir.
Okay.
It was speculation. They're still working in groundwater over here, they have been. There's been, this Orchard Meadows site, when they first started building four years ago, groundwater was basically at the ground level. It has went down substantially since then. We've also had a lot less rainfall. I don't know that there's any way to correlate that groundwater based on that leak.
Okay, thanks.
I've got a speaker request form from Kyle Tralor on this item.
Good morning. Kyle Tralor with KTM Design Solutions here in Rapid City. I'm here to represent the owner, who could not make it to the meeting this morning, he had to be out of town. Couple items that we'd like to bring up. The first one, just to kind of follow up on John's comments there, we do have a large channel construction project that's currently in works. After the water line was shut down, we did see a noticeable drop in the groundwater levels where they were working. Now, like Ted said, there's, moisture's been down, but anecdotally, it does seem like the groundwater in that area has dropped and made construction much easier on the guys out there in the field. Second, the, in regards to, can you pull up the master plan? So this is the master plan for the Orchard Meadows development. It's a master planned mixed-use community. Like Fletcher said, we have the commercial, we have some MDR ground, and we have some single-family. To speak to the asking of the reduction along that west property line, this has been a long, long project that's been in the works for several years now. We started in late 2012. We've went through, I think, four or five phases of construction in the various areas right now. During this process, wetland areas were identified by the Army Corps of Engineers, which caused us to rework the plan to some degree. And as you can see on this master plan, we have a large dedicated green space immediately west. This area is, is basically us preserving existing wetlands that have been identified through multiple studies. So what you're going to end up with along the west side of this is an undevelopable parcel, roughly 13 acres plus or minus, that we can never do any work on it, nobody will ever be able to do any work on. It's going to be contained within a wetland easement. So essentially, you have a large tract immediately behind this property, separated by additional space to, to, you know, create a buffer zone, but we're asking to push that property line back, because simply there will be no development along this side. And it adds a sense of being close to nature, too. With the channel project, we're reseeding with wetlands. We have identified, you know, essentially, nature corridors up and down through this area. So it just kind of provides a way for these residents, these apartments, to become closer to the area, but quite simply, there will be no development on the other side of that property line, and therefore, we've asked to push that back a little bit to account for that. All right. And then I have, also, the owner has requested that stipulations seven and nine, as stated inside of the staff report, be revised slightly. Currently, seven is written to, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall coordinate with the Rapid Valley Sanitary District to the timing and installation of sanitary sewer and water improvements. The owner would like to request that prior to this middle of the final PUD, that the developer coordinate with the City of Rapid City and Rapid Valley Sanitary District. And similarly, on item number nine, we'd like to request that the language be changed to, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, adequate sanitary sewer capacity be constructed and accepted by the City of Rapid City and Rapid Valley Sanitary District. Now, the reason for the slight change in adding Rapid City and Rapid Valley into the stipulation is, is quite simply, this is a large master plan development. We have, it is served by Rapid Valley Sanitary District, but we do have significant sanitary sewer improvements that are Rapid City's, that run through this property as well. Along the northern side of this, we have a 27-inch trunk line that drains a good portion of Rapid City. And then also, on the city's master plan, master utility plan, they've identified a potential route for a larger diversion that runs down this green corridor down the side here. So this, given with limited capacity within the Rapid Valley system, we just want to keep that conversation to include Rapid City and Rapid Valley, so that we can work together to really hopefully provide some regional improvements at the end of the day that will improve Rapid City's system, will help out Rapid Valley, and at the same time, provide additional sewer capacity for this development. If you have any questions, I'll stick around for a while.
Thank you. On the last two comments regarding stipulation seven and eight, Vicki would, or Fletcher, would you have any thoughts on the proposed revised language?
So the stipulations as stand would defer the requirement on the sanitary sewer until prior to issuance of a building permit. So by backing that up to saying, prior to submittal of a final plan development, that's actually constraining the applicant more, and I don't think we would have a problem with that. As far as the language goes of adding, the developer shall coordinate with the City of Rapid City and Rapid Valley Sanitary District to provide adequate sanitary sewer capacity, I'll defer to Ted to see whether or not the engineering division would accept that language.
Ted?
Thank you. I would agree with Vicki on the stipulation for final plan development. We think that's more restrictive. If the applicant wants that, that would be fine. We think it's, it allows them more latitude to not have to provide their final sewer capacity designer analysis, or a design at building permit time. That allows them to get their final plan development in place, build some of the buildings as they have capacity. If they want that, that's fine, add that extra stipulation. We do not support adding, the changing the language to adding City of Rapid City and Rapid Valley into those stipulations. This, these improvements are in Rapid Valley Sanitary District. It is Rapid Valley sanitary's contractual requirements between the city that they provide sewer service to this development. The city is, is working with the applicant and with Rapid Valley in our major improvements to ensure there's capacity for Rapid Valley's needs, but we're not primary in that service Rapid Valley is. So we would not support adding or changing that language to include the city.
Okay. Then item eight, changing at building permit, issuance of building permit to issuance of C of O.
We would say, prior to, upon submittal of a final plan development, and then the rest of that would stay the same. On stipulation number eight, instead of prior to issuance of a building permit, it would be prior to submittal of a, or upon submittal of a final plan development.
I, I'm sorry, I thought on item eight, he requested changing to issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
That is farther down on nine.
Kyle, maybe you could tell me who, if I'm crazy or not.
So number nine has, the current language is prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. The additional, the additional sanitary sewer improvements required to serve this portion shall be completed. We'd like to request that be revised to, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, adequate sanitary sewer capacity shall be constructed and accepted by the City of Rapid City and the Rapid Valley Sanitary District.
Thoughts on item nine? Ted?
Um, thank you, sir. I guess we have no objection to the minor change in the language to say that it's accepted rather than completed. We believe that means the same thing, but we would not support adding the city's concurrence in that acceptance.
Okay. Steve Rollinger?
I got, I've got a question. What is the purpose of adding City of Rapid City in there?
Sure. So we've had, like I said, this has been a project that's been in development for many years. It's phased, and we've had fairly steady growth in the area. When the project was initially planned and laid out, we submitted the overall subdivision plan with three different sanitary sewer options. The first was installing a new lift station that would serve the entire development. That would have pushed the sanitary sewer up to the Rapid City's 27-inch main. We coordinated with, we also, we're working with Rapid Valley, and we had the option of upgrading one of their existing lift stations as a temporary fix to provide sanitary sewer capacity. And then we were also working with, with the city to construct a portion of their, their major utility plan, which included a 27-inch diversion main that runs along the east side of that property. So we had all three of those options available to us. And at that time, it was our understanding that that regional Rapid City main would be developed, you know, within a time span that would allow us to eventually serve this additional area. That, that regional trunk main, the 27 inches, is needed not just for this development, but the Rapid Valley District needs to also add their sewer flow into there, too. So the improvements, knowing that the, we had a time limitation, our understanding was that that was going to be constructed within a certain amount of time. It hasn't happened yet, and so we have fewer options available to us. We'd like to continue that conversation with Rapid City on, on installing that, that major trunk line and rerouting some of Rapid Valley's sanitary sewer into there, serving additional units from, from this development into that, that main as well. Secondly, we are right now, although we have agreements with Rapid Valley for all of the services, we are connecting into, directly into Rapid City's infrastructure with, with portions of the commercial already. And so even with, even with this development, if the, if the lift station option is realized to specifically serve this, we'll be, be lifting that into the 27-inch Rapid City main that already exists today. So we just think it's vitally important that, that Rapid City is involved in those communications with Rapid Valley, just, just so we don't end up with confusion at the end, or multiple rings where we're presenting to one group, getting approvals, and presenting to a second group, getting approvals. If we can have everybody together, essentially, we'll simplify design and create a better system overall.
Can I follow up?
Yeah.
And with that, I guess I don't understand your opposition to me. It sounds pretty common sense that everybody should be on the same page.
I believe we are. We are working with Rapid Valley to provide capacity to them. There is some contractual requirements, there is state and local, that it's in Rapid Valley Sanitary District, they provide the service. The service that Kyle alluded to for the commercials, those, that's a Rapid, or that's a Rapid Valley sewer collection system that discharges into the city's trunk main, we don't actually collect. The city doesn't provide the collection system, distribution. We are only providing the treatment and transportation, transmission for Rapid Valley. So there are some subtleties in the contractual requirements, allowance through the state for the sanitary districts and the city's jurisdictional allowances. We don't see a need, I guess the language we think is correct and stipulations there in Rapid Valley's district, Rapid Valley needs to provide them the sewer service. We work, we'll provide service to Rapid Valley. We can't provide service directly to consumers without contractual differences, agreements. It really doesn't change anything we're doing. City is working on providing the diversion main that Kyle has talked to. Just recently, we had Utility Support Fund approved funding for the next phase of that sewer trunk main that comes from Reservoir Road to the Jolly Lane Lift Station. That's expected to be designed in 2018, built in 2019. The next piece that goes from that lift station up and picks up the 27-inch sewer and bypasses that out of our 42-inch main is not funded, is not in, we don't have a date of timing for that to be improved. There's no way to guarantee that right now, and we're, say, we're limited on funding, we're also limited on timing and resources to actually get that work done. So what's a ways out? There are other options we've discussed with Rapid Valley and with the applicant. Adding us into the mix seems to make it more complicated than it needs to be, but can cause, or may cause problems in the future. So I guess we do not support, public work engineering does not support the changes. We believe we're providing the comments and services needs to be done with their comments as they are.
John?
So even though Rapid Valley Sanitation District is responsible for the installation, do you monitor it, too? I mean, do you guys inspect it since it is built in the city limits?
We do provide some oversight to look at the connections to the city's services, but generally, that's Rapid Valley's water and sewer. We do not do the primary inspection of that, observation is their improvements. So we look at how it connects to our system, say, do some third-party observation, just to verify that the compaction and stuff is done right, so there isn't a failure, but it is Rapid Valley's installations.
So in the future, is it ever going to be Rapid City's? Since it's, if it connects up to that 27-inch line to the 42-inch line, wouldn't those borders change and it become part of Rapid City's system?
There's been gossip to that extent, quite often, that it could be city service at one day. There's no way to know that. They are an incorporated district, they have the right to operate. Rapid Valley would have to give that up and the city accept it. That's purely speculation that that could ever happen, but it.
I would recommend that we have something that says the City of Rapid City will approve the installation of the system as it goes in, so we don't have another Big Sky coming down the road.
There are, they do build, basically, Rapid Valley has standards, they do use our standards, our specifications as well. They're all constructed to the Ten States standards. There's the same construction requirements generally throughout the process, regardless of whose service or whose installation it is, but, but based on jurisdictional requirements or jurisdiction, it is Rapid Valley's system, not ours.
Karen?
Thank you. John, you brought up a point that has been discussed for over 20 years. I can remember years ago when we sat down with Rapid Valley and the city, trying to work out a deal where they could move those boundaries out, but because they are a legal boundary, they collect taxes and, and have the authority to do that, it would require, it would require some legislation to, and some legal things to get those boundaries moved. But as the city grows, it's a, it's a good idea. I mean, we saw that over 20 years ago, but that's, it's hard to do, and people have their, their equipment and their, their infrastructure there. Do we buy it from them? And, you know, it's a, it's a bigger issue. But I agree with John. And, you know, it's a, it's a bigger issue, but I agree with John. If we could move that out, that would be great. Um, I'd like to a- ask a question of staff about, um, that rearview 25-foot thing that they would like to have, and the reason why we are sticking to that and, and not agreeing to that seems how it's butting up against a, uh, property that is not gonna be developed. I don't know where that road is, so I don't know if that road is on the undeveloped side or if that road is on the property they wanna use for this apartment complex. And if it's too close, is the road too close? I, I'm just looking for more clarification on that issue.
Uh, so, taking it from the staff report and Public Works comments, uh, the proposed drainage channel located to the west is, uh, will realign, realign and confine existing federal FEMA identified floodway to the limits of the channel. So, this is a floodway, and the separation is to preserve that buffer, that separation from that floodway. As well, there is a, a utility path which will be located there, so keeping the, the apartments away from that maintenance path. It's not a walking path, it's a maintenance path, so there'll be vehicles driving up it or, you know, working vehicles, working, people doing work and having, preserving that backyard area separation for the future residents.
Okay. So, the floodway comes right up to that property line or where they're going to, to have that, those apartments?
Mr. Chair, if we could have, um, engineering answer those questions, please.
Yeah, yeah. Go for it, Ted.
I'm gonna go on this thing.
Yeah, that's where it is down there.
This one's a better one, I think. So, this here, I believe, is actually the maintenance road for the drainage way, right against the property line and maybe off a little bit. Then adjacent to that, there's a hundred-foot wide or around a hundred-foot wide drainage channel. That is the floodwa- is a defined floodway as part of element eight of the Drainage Basin Plan. So, this is where all the drainings, grain, floodwaters come from the north, off of the properties north, it's on the tributary basin. So, this is actually, this piece in here is the drainage channel. This other stuff to the west is wetlands and such, and as Kyle alluded, it won't be developed. But our concern is these apartments are right against this maintenance road, where there'll be its maintenance of this channel. Could be heavier equipment, vehicles out there. And then this, the floodway drainage channel is here. It's not a huge, deep channel. I think it's four to five foot deep. It's a hundred-foot wide. It's expected to convey a high flow. It's not, we don't believe it's a good idea to get these buildings and, and people any closer to that channel and to that maintenance road than we need to. So, that's, that's our justify, or our rationale, that we think we need to maintain that separation to keep people, pedestrians away from that floodway and that drainage, drainage way and that access road.
Okay. Thank you.
Quick, a quick follow-up on that.
Undress that.
Fletcher.
And just, just kind of a clarification on, on the, the channel and the project that we're working on. Can you pull the master plan up? So, uh, it, like I said, this, this was a, a large, complicated drainage project that involved FEMA, involved, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers, the City of Rapid City Drainage Element. Uh, but, but the actual channel, so the, the channel that Ted's referring to, uh, it, it starts here and it, and it runs down to right here where it cuts off. So, from this northern section up to there, you have a hundred-foot wide bottom channel that's a few feet deep, able to compare, you know, able to, uh, convey all this flow. After that point, it, it spills out onto this wetland area. So, there's, there's no defined channel from here all the way through up to here. What, what the intent is and, and, and what we're providing is, is that this, this flow after that point spills out over this entire 13-area or this 13-acre area, uh, to keep these wetlands alive, uh, to keep 'em growing, to keep, to keep, keep 'em functioning as they have been for, for the past 20 years. But then after that point, down on the second southern road, uh, we collect that water again with a, an overflow system, and then we have a, a hundred-foot wide channel that runs to Rapid Creek right here. So, in the area directly adjacent to these apartments, we don't have a hundred-foot wide channel. It's, it's really a, a varying channel width of everything, anything from, you know, I wanna, I'm gonna guess here, but it's somewhere between 300, 400 feet wide across that entire property. Uh, the floodplain and the floodway is confined within that 100-year channel where the channel exists. Um, inside of that 13 acres, uh, because your area is so spread out, uh, it, it drops as, you know, really has a, an effect on the water level, and so it generally drops that and, and it takes more of a, a, not a straight path through there, so it's, it's curved and I don't have an exhibit, but, uh, through the channels, the floodway is very defined within those channel boundaries. Through that wetlands, it, it wanders all the way through and around there.
Thank you. Karen, you have a follow-up?
Yeah. Ted, can you then clarify for me? What he's saying is there's still gonna be that, a lower channel through that section so that, I mean, it's, the water's coming down a hundred-foot channel and it, and it has a chance to spread out, but if there's still that, that hundred-foot wide deeper area, it seemed like the water would still stay there. So, I'm, I'm just confused by the two com- comments here.
I apologize. I didn't expect this conversation today. I didn't look at the plans. I didn't bring them along. We have construction plans. This is under construction. Still believe there'll be a, a more of a defined channel. All this will, has a potential to be a few feet deep underwater, under high flow. This is against, and is shown in this plan that shows that, and I don't know how current this master plan is. This does show a meandering channel against, closer to those apartments, shows a pond to those apartments. We expect the more channelized flow will go there first, and higher flows, this would all be inundated. You know, these wetlands will basically be underwater or, or most of them will. And like I say, there's the main, the maintenance road for the wetland, for the channel, is on this west, east side, adjacent to these properties. That's where we expected to access this, to maintain this drainage way. And we won't be maintaining, don't intend on maintaining the wetlands, but we do have to maintain that flow, flowway, drainage way through the, through the property. And I know you can't see me pointing at this thing, 'cause that's really not doing any good. Sorry. I guess we would anticipate, you know, the main flows would go through this area. Does that show up? Nah.
Yeah? Okay.
But I don't, and I apologize again, I didn't pull up the plans. I don't know quite what the depth of the water would be out in here, but there will be during high flows, and most of this will be, this area in here will be underwater, I think. So, we don't-
Mr. Chair?
-don't think it's a good idea to, to give up that extra buffer.
Yeah, Becky.
Just a reminder, this is an initial plan development, so it's all just concept. This may be a better discussion as a part of the final plan development when we have full construction plans submitted with the drainage plan and analysis so that we can see whether or not there is a conflict and whether or not it makes sense to support the setback. Kyle, is that something you think your client? I, I certainly, I would rather eliminate the request to reduce the setback than have it on record that it be denied. When you come in with a full drainage plan as a part of the final, maybe then we could sit down and have this discussion again.
It, so, it, now, the difference between the initial and the final plan development, the initial, we're, we're basically conceptual right now. Uh, what we're showing in the, the setbacks that we're asking for, uh, we haven't went to the full 100% design. Now, if I were to come back again with a final plan development, that essentially means I need to have, uh, 100% complete building plans prepared for that submittal, and, and I need to have those buildings located exactly where they're going to be. That being the case, uh, i- if I'm coming in with, with that full design and there's a significant cost in preparing those plans and, and for the apartment complex itself, if, if, uh, if we're having that discussion, uh, and I don't have an exact location of, of where I can set those edge buildings, then I really can't submit a final plan development, or there's a potential that we're gonna have to redo, uh, the, the plan development as it sits. So, uh, for me, it would make sense to have, have a, an answer today or, or some sort of closure on this, because in the final plan development stage, we're, we're going to be passed when, when this really becomes relevant or when it is relevant. Uh, to, to kind of follow up on, on the flow, the flow questions, uh, we are not allowed to do any work in that area that, that we're talking about. So, there is, there is no channelization. What you have right now is, is a, a low-lying flat ground that's, that's developed wetlands over the last 20 years. Uh, there is, there, there, there's flow channels, but they move in and out, and there's no, there's no designated or dug drainage diversion through there. So, the water literally takes from that channel, spills into this open area, and flows through that, that entire 13 acres, and then it is re-channelized there at that southern edge where it's, it's put back in the channel and flows to Rapid Creek.
What's the road for then in that section?
Uh, that was a, a requirement that we provided maintenance channel along the entire project from north to south.
Yeah. So, that, you can build a road in that area? You can't dig down, but you can actually build the road? Is that what you're saying?
We can, we, yeah, we, so through the permitting process, that road is, is the last thing that we can build.
Okay. I, I guess my only concern is that you have houses so close to a drainage area or a place that could have floodwaters, and in an apartment, you're gonna have kids and they're gonna be all over that place. And I, I, from a safety standpoint, that was my concern as far as having a buffer there, you know, to have some kind of buffer. And I don't know if 25 feet is the right buffer, but, you know, I mean, I'd be willing to look at a different depth if that would help. I don't know. I'm just throwing some ideas out there to, to make sure that this is a safe environment for people who live there. That's my concern.
And, and we had requested the, I think it was 15 foot, so just 10 foot over, so we still had that reasonable buffer, uh, between that, that edge of bank. And I call it an edge of bank, but, you know, really, it's, it's a, it's a low-lying wetland.
Okay. Any further comments from staff about those ideas?
Mr. Chair, I, I think Ted did a great job explaining why Public Works did not support the reduction, so I'll just fall back on those instead of repeating them.
Okay. Thank you.
We have a few other people that have been waiting for a while now. Rachel?
Okay. So, I just wanna make sure that I'm, I'm on the same page with everyone. Um, we're not talking about, um, changing property lines here with reducing that exception. We're talking about building something that probably is too large for the area according to zoning.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Becky.
So, the minimum setback requirement to this lot line is 25 feet for an apartment building. The applicant's requesting to reduce that down to 15 feet. So, the building's not too large, and they're not overbuilding this site per se. Uh, it's just where they wanna have their open space, whether, whether that's gonna be used more as a part of the parking versus green space. What I heard engineering say is they want the separation on the west side of that building to secure a minimum 25-foot separation to that, um, flood area.
Okay. Thank you. Um, my other question is about, uh, keeping Rapid City, the language, out of, um, I believe that was number nine. Uh, what benefit does having Rapid City in there do to you guys, um, as the client?
Uh, first and foremost, it, it simplifies the conversation. So, we're, we're having everybody working together upfront, uh, and there's, there's several moving, there's several options available to us right now. Uh, some of them are city improvements, some of them are Rapid Valley improvements. And, and so, to really make sure that we end up on what's right for, for this development, for the region in whole, uh, we really are, uh, really, really would like to see Rapid City included in this conversation. Uh, and we've, we've mentioned a couple of these sewer lines, but, but one of them, uh, when I, when I say the Rapid City improvements, I mean the not Rapid Valley Sanitary District-owned improvements, I mean Rapid City improvements. And, and that would be along this east property line here? Oh, I got it on the, let's see. No, I'm on the wrong guy. So, there's, you can see, or you can kind of see, but between the edge of, of these back lots right here and, and the actual east property boundary of, of this property itself, there's actually a hundred-foot wide, uh, area that we've left, um, partially undeveloped. I say partially because we have some drainage improvements that run through a portion of that, but we dedicated the other portion of that for a future Rapid City diversion main that would run from here down and then over to those improvements that Ted was mentioning the other day. The construction of, of that would not be, uh, a Rapid Valley improvement project. That'd be a Rapid City improvement project. Um, but it would take everybody working together to get that done. And, and what that sewer line would let us do is, is route some of the sewer from this development into that, still using Rapid Valley as, as a service provider, but it also gives Rapid Valley the opportunity to take a, they have a lift station on this side, uh, and, and this has all been worked out through agreements, or these are agreements that we've, and discussions that we've had, but it lets them take their lift station offline and back into that line. So, one of the options that we're, we're pursuing is the construction of this, and, and we'd like to leave that open, and since that truly is a Rapid City infrastructure improvement, uh, you know, we feel that Rapid City should be involved in that conversation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Galen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be pretty quick here. So, my question's about the floodplain in the wetland there. Maybe Callie can address this. Is any part of the 100-year floodplain going to reach on that apartment property, or is everything contained within that parcel that's dedicated to the floodplain?
Everything, all, everything that's, uh, all the floodplain, 100-year floodway, 100-year floodplain, everything's contained within that wetland areas, uh, and within the channel that we're constructing itself.
Yep. So, regardless of it's 15 and 25, no part of the floodplain will be on that apartment complex, so?
Correct.
I mean, with that said, I can support the 15-foot setback instead of 25.
Uh, Mike?
I, I, it's along the same lines as Galen just had, uh, that what is the difference in elevation with the space for the greenway there and the apartment is, what is that difference in elevation?
There's, there's a approximately, I, I apologize, I don't have the plans here myself, but there's approximately three to four foot of elevation difference from, from that edge up to where these, these apartments are going to be, uh, currently with, with what we're grading in now. Uh, when we get into the actual final design, they'll probably come up even a little bit more.
And on that same line, there is not, if there is not the 100-foot drainage area, would it behoove us to have that 100-foot area in there along with the greenway to run that water through? I, I guess I, 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 as we develop, that's something we need to look at is, are we protecting the homes, the people, if a flood should hit?
Uh, absolutely. The, the homes are protected and the flood is, is contained. Uh, and, and I'm gonna move into my own personal realm here. I would, I would agree that the channel should have run all the way to the south. Unfortunately, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers and FEMA did not agree with us. Uh, they're actually the ones that are requiring us to, to build it in this, in this fashion. But, uh, to follow up on the first comment, uh, the floodplain has been modeled, the, FEMA has, uh, accepted the, the floodplain, and, and so those, those elevations of where the flood is are well documented. They've already been approved. Uh, we've maintained, uh, a, a minimum of a foot between our lowest elevation to the, uh, the 100-year floodplain, and in most places, we've got two to three feet. So, we, we've always made that a priority to make sure that anything that we're putting is, is not just protected, but well-protected.
Kurt?
Uh, yeah, a couple more and I'll be, I'll try to be quick. Uh, is there- Uh, is there gonna be a fence between, um, the property and that drainage? To keep, you know, kids out, you know, one of the concern is safety, you know, we got all, all these kids and is there gonna be a a fence at least separating the property from the drainage?
Right now, we do not have a fence proposed along that, that lot line.
Okay. Uh, my other comment is, you know, I, I, being a, a somewhat drainage guy, I, I, I really like the fact that um, you do widen it out and you slow down the flows because, you know, being a direct uh, element into Rapid Creek, you'll, you'll really gain on water quality, um, that, that's gonna be discharged. You're slowing that water down. All the crap that's coming in through there will settle out, filtered through the, through the, the wetlands and that's probably one of the main reasons why the Corps doesn't want you to, to mess around with that and channel it so that it goes directly into the creek. I, I, I think that's a, a, a good thing. Uh, but I am concerned, you know, because that is gonna have standing water quite a bit. I mean, you're pretty flat there. And, and a fence along there would, would help to, to keep those kids out of there and, and anybody else. That's all I have. Okay, Steve?
I, I'll follow up with what he just said there. My concern again with what Karen said would be for the children because anytime you have a water area, kids are gonna just gravitate to it and I could see that. I, and I'm struggling because normally I, I, I support something like this, but with the water being there in a flood, if there was a fence there, I, I, I could support it. Without it, I'm probably not gonna be able to support it just because we don't know. There's so many unanswered questions from what I'm hearing from both sides. I keep hearing, well, we're not sure, you know, unless something happens, we're, we're not gonna know. I'd rather be safe than sorry. Um, and then following up with the other part about including Rapid City, I'd like to see that language in there because we are right, right on the border between two and I, I, I don't want Rapid City someday to say, well, we had nothing to do with that. That was all them. We had the chance to be part of this to make sure it's done correctly and if anything needs to be changed, we can have our input into this. I see no problem with including Rapid City in it so that, you know, we're right there on the border. We really need to make sure this is right and we need to work in, in, in cooperation with each other. So I could support that, but without a fence, I'm afraid I probably can't support the, uh, the fifteen feet.
I, I, I think we'd be more than willing to adjust the language, uh, or, or if, if we were to utilize that extra ten foot to, to have a fence installed on that property line. So if you wanted to make that conditional to the approval, uh, and just with, with the motion, I think that that's more than, more than okay with us.
Uh, Rachel?
Yeah, sorry, I know we're really taking this, um, but I'm, I'm just curious, uh, what kind of contractual obligations does that create for Rapid City to have Rapid City actually added into that?
Thank you. Um, I don't know that I can answer that hundred percent. It may commit Rapid City to have, to build that at the city's expense. If we're required to provide that service or part of the agreement stipulation is that sewer's there, it may require the city to come up with the four or five million dollars to extend that sewer right away as opposed to when our plans are to be there, so that's a concern of ours. If we're in, required to provide sewer, we're gonna have to pay for it. So I don't know how to get it there.
Okay, thank you.
Karen?
My question is for Kyle. Um, if you're gonna put a fence there, how are you gonna get people to go to the other side to walk in the paths or whatever that? Yeah, well, yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, the kids will do the same thing. I, I mean, that's kind of my thoughts.
If I, well, it, it's, it would probably be pretty standard fence and, uh, you know, if, if we're talking about, you know, a distance of ten feet, you know, and walking around the fence, there, I, I guess what I'm, I'm saying, there's probably nothing aside, because we're going to have gates, you know, along, along the south side of the fence and the north side of the fence. We do have a trail system. Uh, there's going to be, and there are trails already constructed along, uh, you know, drainage pathways out there. If, if a children or if, if a child is playing and wants to go around that fence, they're gonna be able to go around the fence.
But at least it would deter some of them.
Exactly. And, and when you're talking to really small children that you're probably more concerned about, uh, that, that is, becomes a, a pretty significant deterrent if, if you can't move very fast or very quick.
Okay, thank you.
Steve?
Getting back to the, the language, putting Rapid City in there, I'm not saying, I'm not sure how we're gonna be forced to do anything. All's I'm saying is we should be in there so that we could at least be part of the, the conversation. Being kind of a, part of the conversation doesn't force us to do anything. Uh, there's no contract, there's no contractual obligation or anything at that point. It's just, we're part of the, of, of the discussion and, and we have our input as to what we think could be wrong or or right. It's better to do that now than ten years from now saying, well, yeah, we really should have done that. We wouldn't have done it that way had we been part of that conversation. So that's the only thing I'm saying is I'd like us to be part of the conversation. And getting back to the fence, I agree. I'm worried about the real little ones. So you're gonna have teenagers or ten year olds, eleven year olds. Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna go where they wanna go. It's that two, three, four year old that the mom might run and get the phone and wanders off and next thing you know, we have a, a drowned child. Didn't go around the fence, just went straight to the water and that would at least alleviate that for me.
Thank you, uh.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
We need a motion to extend the meeting past nine o'clock.
Extend the motion. I moved extend the meeting.
Uh, Steve made the motion to extend the meeting. Rachel seconded that motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And I'll note here for, uh, minutes sake, Galen left during the, uh, item here before the vote. No other lights up? Don't have a motion on the floor though, uh?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
May I suggest that, um, perhaps, uh, the planning commission, um, take a vote on granting the exception to reduce the setback along the rear lot line from twenty-five feet to fifteen feet to see whether or not, uh, you support staff's position to deny or whether or not you want to grant it contingent upon a fence being provided along that east lot line.
My motion would be to do it with the, with the, with the, with the fence. I'd make the motion that we grant the, the, uh,
Exception.
Exception with the addition of the fence.
Are we, so we're specifically talking on that?
That one.
Stipulation currently?
Just the one.
Okay.
Everyone clear on that motion? Uh, Steve made it. John seconded the motion, uh, specifically talking about item one.
Just item one.
Uh, any discussion on that motion? Rachel?
Um, yeah, so, so we don't really have any, um, say over that fence at all. We're just saying that as long as there's a fence of some sort. I, I'm, I'm just curious, like specifically what we're voting on.
That's your prerogative. You could say a six foot high privacy fence or a four foot high chain link fence. You, you can decide.
Okay, I, I think I just wanted to, to clarify.
I think we've got it where it stands, um, unless any motion maker second wants to change it. Seeing none, all those in favor of granting the, uh, reduced rear yard setback from twenty-five to fifteen feet with the added stipulation that a fence be installed, uh, to protect that border. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Mr. Chair? Um, you've heard from the applicant that they would like the language changed in stipulations eight and nine. You've heard from Public Works staff that other than changing stipulation eight to read upon submittal of a plan, final plan development, the approximate one hundred and twelve units that exceed the current one hundred and forty dwelling unit sewer capacity, the applicant shall have approved construction plans for the additional sewer and water improvements.
Seven and nine.
I brought eight into the.
Ah, you're right. So prior to, upon submittal of a final plan development, the applicant shall coordinate with Rapid City, with Rapid Valley Sanitary District for the timing installation of sanitary sewer and water improvements as required to, to serve this development and future site development. So staff would be in support of revising that stipulation to read as is. Um, if any planning commissioner would like that language further changed, you may wanna make that clear to the commission.
I don't see any lights up, uh. I don't. I don't speak for everybody here, but I'll try. Uh, I'm guessing there's no appetite for, um, requiring the city to take part in any construction by adding them to the stipulation. However, you know, I think there is an appetite to have the city involved in the conversation and make sure that this planning is done from a regional perspective, uh, if any. Steve, thank you. You got me off the hook.
Well, yeah, I'm looking at this as prior to this, as a building permit, the applicant shall coordinate with the Rapid Valley Sanitary District and Rapid City. I, we're just talking coordination here. I'm not talking four million dollars. I'm not talking that. I'm just saying when it's all coordinated, have us be part of the coordination, part of the conversation. If money and something does come up, then that's a different issue. This is just about being there and, and, and part of the conversation. I believe that's what we're trying to get at, aren't we?
Yep, absolutely.
So would it be more appropriate to use that term prior, that, that shall coordinate with Rapid Valley District and Rapid City versus some, and that's all we're trying to do is, is coordination.
Can I maybe ask that question to Carla? Is, we're getting into language and I like to have a lawyer talk about language.
Good idea.
Um, I think the use of the word coordinate, um, is, is a good one. Um, I think just from a legal perspective, we're not, I don't think you through a stipulation in an initial plan development can commit the city to spend millions of dollars. But I think what staff is concerned about is having stipulations thrown back in our face and saying that, you know, this is what the stipulation reads and this, there's been a commitment here that you need to, to honor. So I think, um, use of the word coordinate, um, and some language that says that we will be a part of the conversation. I don't think that that, um, is overly burdensome and I think that leaves room for what you're concerned about as well as what the applicant is concerned about.
So could you give that wording that you would put in seven and nine that you're comfortable with and that Ted's comfortable with that we can, I think we can move this forward rather quickly.
Um. Well, I guess what I would suggest, I haven't completely been tracking the conversation on the different proposals. Um, but I don't see a problem legally with saying that the applicant shall coordinate with Rapid Valley Sanitary District and, and the city for the timing and the installation of the improvements.
Yeah, so I like for number seven. Now let's go to the number, number nine.
Yeah, Becky.
I, I throw this back to Carla and see if this, from what I heard you say, to say the applicant, the city shall participate in the conversation with the coordination, um, with Rapid Valley Sanitary District for the timing and installation of sanitary sewer.
I think that would be fine too.
I like that. Now, can we go on to number, was it number nine? Was the other one, what they were wanting the same thing? What was the wording that you had for number?
For, for number nine, we had, um, can, can you tell me the language on that first one again, seven?
I would see that as an added sentence at the end. Rapid City shall participate with the coordination.
The discussion.
The discussion. Shall participate with the discussion with the applicant and Rapid Valley Sanitary District, um, as to the timing and installation of sanitary sewer and water improvements. Does that make sense or did you have it envisioned some other way?
Becky, could you read us what you had in, in entirety, what you think it should be?
So prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall coordinate with Rapid Valley Sanitary District for the timing and installation of sanitary sewer and water improvements as required to serve this development and future site development. In addition, the city shall participate in those discussions.
One, one adjustment to that, I think you said building permit, uh, prior to the submittal, so here, here, here was what we requested and and just prior to the submittal of the final plans unit development rather than the building permit, uh, the developer has to coordinate with the city of Rapid City and the Rapid Valley Sanitary District to provide adequate sanitary sewer capacity.
So what I said, changing prior to issuance of a building permit with upon submittal of a final plan development or prior to submittal of a final plan development, prior to submittal of a final plan development, you leave the rest of that sentence the same. In addition, the city shall participate in those discussions. Please note that when anyone submits a plan development, a conditional use permit or a rezone, it is automatically coordinated through Rapid City, whether it's Green Valley, Sanitary, Rapid Valley or any other district. I think when Ted said adding language can create perhaps some conflict or assumed responsibility, it will always be coordinated with us. We wouldn't bring it to you unless we had reviewed it and signed off on it.
Oh, John, sorry.
Does that mean they approve the design? And does that mean, do they ensure that it's installed properly? I mean, what does coordinate mean? It's built within the city limits. I assume you have control over how it's built.
We do. We work closely with Rapid Valley. We review the plans, Rapid Valley reviews them, we talk back and forth, make sure that everything is acceptable to both parties or all parties. A Rapid Valley signs off on the plans, we sign off on the plans as well. And then to Rapid Valley is primary as far as inspection, observation of their improvements and acceptance of their improvements. We also monitor that, make sure that they comply with the plans and specifications as approved. And then the acceptance at the end is, is Rapid Valley accepts them as well as us.
Great, that, that's what I want.
So we, we do that. We've done that. I mean, we've worked on that for years. That's standard procedure. It goes without saying. We do that, so.
Karen?
Thank you. I, I guess I, I don't quite understand if, if the city and the, and Rapid Valley work together already. There's a reason why you want that language in there and I, I, I can't understand what the issue is.
I think it, it, I think it really does come down to, uh, we wanna make sure that, that what we put in is, is truly regional and benefits the entire area. And because, uh, uh, potentially some of the improvements would truly be a part of Rapid City's master plan, master utility plan, uh, we, we would really like to have them as part of the process and, and we'd like to have it stated that it is part of the process. Uh, some of these, some of these items are, are Rapid Valleys, but even in those cases, um, to speak to, to, some of the points that have been brought up, whether it's improving their lift station again, uh, you know, the, it, it's an excellent idea for Rapid City to be a part of that conversation too, because if, if, if we're upgrading a lift station to only serve this and, and a few homes on Pioneer Drive, uh, when we can coordinate and do something that, that can serve everybody, we, we just wanna have that language in there so that, that we can all be working together to, uh, really provide the best utility infrastructure system that we can for, for this entire area.
Right, and I understand what you're saying, but I also understand from Ted that he's already gonna do that anyway. If I understand that correctly, I, I, I'm, I'm just wondering if there's issues that you don't think Rapid Valley will provide the correct stuff and you wanna make sure that the city sees what they're doing? Or if there's some issue before that is making this, uh, question in, in your mind or your client's mind? That, that's, you know, I, I don't see there's a problem to add, add that language. It seems like superfluous to me. Well.
Well, and, and, and really what we're, what we're concerned with is that, uh, potentially one group or another is going to, uh, say, well, we don't wanna be part of this. You guys work directly with them. Leave us out till the very end. Well, just, just kinda like the, the deal with, with the setbacks on the initial plan development to the, to the final plan development. Once we get to, say if we're working with Rapid Valley exclusively, once we get to that end result, uh, a large amount of time, a large amount of money and a larger, a large amount of thought has been expended into that idea, that's when it would. That's when it would go to the other group for review. So, that's when it would come back to them. Well, then, at that point, it doesn't always make sense. It's not always feasible to go backwards. So, if we can have everybody working together upfront and this language just helps reinforce that thought.
Okay, thanks.
Steve?
After having listened to Ted and having listened to Vicky, I kind of agree with what you just said, Karen, because it just seems, you've told me your, everything that I've asked for is to be working with, you're going to be doing that anyway. And pretty much what you said, too, Vicky, is that all that sort of, the coordination's going to be there. We're working with them. Is that what I've heard?
As a part of the final plan development, that sewer plan has to be submitted to the city. We in turn route it to Rapid Valley. There may be some coordination before that submittal is made, that Kyle's really referencing, just for point of clarity. Is that really what we're talking about, Kyle? Is how you're working towards even getting the design done to submit for the final? And you want to make sure the city's sitting at the table?
Because once we get to that final design, once we turn in that final plan development, that means the entire system has been fully designed. If we've been working with Rapid Valley, per the city's instruction, you need to work with Rapid Valley, we go through, we design a fully upgraded off-site lift station for them, or we develop a line that drains and cuts across other properties, well, that's the final design that goes into the city. So, the coordination doesn't really exist between determining which options are the most viable. So, what you see with the next middle is the final design. And if, you know, we're working exclusively with Rapid Valley, then Rapid City doesn't really have a seat at the table until we get to that design point. So, just laying out what's best for the entire region, having the city of Rapid City, having Rapid Valley Sanitary District all upfront, being a part of that conversation and coordinating together, is truly what we're looking to have accomplished with this stipulation. And it's been, it's been an ongoing conversation. So, as you guys mentioned earlier, this was, it's been on the docket since November. And we're just, we want to keep this moving forward. We don't want to stall the entire project out, but we do, you know, we do want to continue to have these conversations and not just say, well, this is all Rapid Valley's issue. You guys work with them. Then come to us with a plan. We want it to be truly regional. We want to make sure everybody's interests are covered.
Okay, Mike?
One quick question. Is there something not there that we're hoping to get that the city has to be involved? I mean, it sounds like there's something that.
Well, and that goes back to, can you pull this up one more time? One of the options, or one of the ways that we can help or provide sewer service for this entire area is through a regional trunk main, which would be a Rapid City main. And that's one that the city has put out RFPs for, and they're designing the lower portions of it right now. But one potential option is the construction of another sized, you know, we've thrown around 27-inch Rapid City main that runs down the east side. If we're not having that conversation with Rapid City and Rapid Valley at the same time, well, Rapid Valley has got, you know, we've got this lift station here, which is old, outsized, outdated. We've updated it once already. You know, we could be looking at, you know, potentially taking a line that diverts through this neighborhood, an actual gravity feed that would be a Rapid Valley main. In that case, it eliminates the need for the 27 and it makes this totally unusable. You can't retrofit the system in the future to make it all work now. So, if we can make it all work now, that's what we'd like to do.
So, you're hoping that the city gets involved and then does this now versus maybe later? And that's where we're having this, that's where this conflict is coming, and that's where the wording is, I guess, the verbiage. And that would be a question that, I guess, do we, back to Red Rock, and are we creating problems? And maybe we avoid them by being involved, but at the same time, it sounds like we might have an expense if we're in here, and that's what we're trying to avoid. That's what I hear.
I think you're right, Mike. You know, and I don't think the planning commission can direct any money to be spent, but I think we do have some appetite to make sure that Rapid City's at the table during the conversation.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So, certainly, we've been in many meetings on this project. And engineering staff has been in many more meetings than the planners have regarding the sanitary sewer. I think if Kyle's truly trying to just secure compliance from staff, that if we are invited to a meeting to sit down with Rapid Valley Sanitary District as they lay out their plan to be a part of that, we're always open to those. As far as planning commission directing staff, you have to go to every meeting every time you're requested. I don't know if that's something that we want to start doing, but the language as we left it, if, again, if I've understood Kyle, and what the real goal here is to just make sure we're participating in the discussion, not the actual direction of money. It could be the lift station, whether it be the temporary lift station or the larger priced lift station. Ted made it clear when he spoke earlier that there's no financial commitment to do the second phase of that connection to the wastewater treatment plant that could service this. So, council's certainly going to have to get involved in that discussion, regardless of, I mean, if we had our druthers, it would all be in and this would be a far easier fit for the developer. Because we've looked at this plan for a lot of years. It's been laid out well. We're all excited about what we see going in out there. But it's been an ongoing discussion from day one. You're going to get so many rooftops, and then you've got to address the sewer capacity issue. And we're at that point. Hence, today, we're kind of all beating around that bush, what's really the issue on the table. Council's going to have to participate in the funding for any project and the timeline for any future construction to be able to secure serving this area from that 27-inch trunk line. We certainly are here to meet with applicants before they submit. And once they do submit, whatever they submit to Rapid Valley has to be submitted to us, because we are going to review it, too. So, with the stipulation as we proposed earlier, I think we can get to Kyle's, we want the city to be sitting at the table. I think that covers it, while it still secures Carla's concern that we don't want to create a stipulation that can be interpreted to say we're committing to millions of dollars of improvements. If anyone wants clarification as to how that stipulation reads, let me know. I have it written down.
And then, so that was number seven?
Seven.
And then, there's number nine, too, which is essentially the same wording, just different timing.
So, number seven, if if we want to add the, change the wording, we would say prior to issuance of a final plan development and add the wording at the end that the city shall participate in those discussions. Item nine is prior to the, did we change the issuance of certificate of occupancy on that? We just added the request that the city participate in the discussions?
I believe that in that one, prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the additional sanitary sewer improvements required to serve this portion of the entire development shall be completed and accepted by Rapid Valley Sanitary District. Kyle would like to, I believe, have added, and the city of Rapid City?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Okay.
Any thoughts on that one, engineering?
Come on now.
Because we do accept those plans. We do stamp and sign off on those plans, too.
We do. We would coordinate. I mean, we would work with Rapid Valley.
Sounds like on that one, we've probably already fulfilling our jurisdictional requirements for accepting the plans. I don't know that, I mean, can the planning commission really get into changing that? The acceptance of improvements, you know?
That procedure's locked in. Typically, what you would see in a stipulation is that a street be completed or a utility be completed. We don't usually say and accepted, because there's a lot that, sometimes it's completed and there's still a punch list. We let them get their certificate of occupancy and they're up and going, but they haven't completed their punch list for us to actually accept it. In this instance, this is going on Rapid Valley Sanitary District's system, so they're going to accept it. We're actually going to stamp after they do and secondarily approve those plans, too. But Rapid Valley actually accepts the plans.
Okay.
And now, in this case, too, I think that this is making it more restrictive on, by adding the terminology city of Rapid City into that stipulation nine, actually makes it more restrictive to the developer of this project, simply because potentially some of these projects are outside of the city limits, inside of Rapid Valley's, where maybe you don't have all of that same protection.
So, in the spirit of cooperation, if we change stipulation nine to read, prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the additional sanitary sewer improvements required to serve this portion of the entire development shall be completed and accepted by Rapid Valley Sanitary District and approved by the city of Rapid City. Would that be okay, Kyle, as a compromise?
Can you read that one more time?
Accepted by Rapid Valley Sanitary District and approved by the city of Rapid City. Do we actually accept them, Ted, or do we approve them?
Poor answer. It depends. Depends on the improvements and what else is included with them. But we, if it's on this, I would assume that it would be joint approval or acceptance between Rapid Valley and Rapid City, because I don't think there will be just solely a sanitary sewer improvement. There will be other site improvements that go with that. As far as the site development, the building permit, the COs include the amenities, parking lots, drainage and that. So, I would say that'd be tough to say it's a single. I mean, it'd be joint approval between Rapid Valley and Rapid City, or acceptance.
And I think, too, you know, regarding the language that we proposed on this one, because some of the projects are, one of the potential projects to serve this area is a Rapid City project. Having Rapid City added on there makes sense, in our opinion, because if we're constructing Rapid City infrastructure to serve this project, having Rapid City added into that stipulation, because we might not just be dealing with Rapid Valley solely.
So, having been up in this situation before, let me just suggest that we put at the end of that sentence, and accepted by Rapid Valley Sanitary District, accepted by Rapid Valley Sanitary District and accepted by the city of Rapid City as necessary. Because Kyle's right. If somehow we miraculously are able to provide that 27-inch trunk line, and that's a part of this, we're going to accept that. So, where it's, it wouldn't impact the city infrastructure. That may not be necessary, but there are elements where it could be. So, I would suggest that. And that does get the acceptance of Rapid Valley and the city into the language as Kyle's proposing.
Okay, Karen? Oh.
I make a motion to approve it as, as changing.
So, Steve's making the motion to approve the item number 11 with the stipulations listed, including the changes, the previously agreed on change to stipulation number one regarding the setback and inclusion of a fence. And then, the change to the wording on items seven and nine, based off Vicky's reading of that wording. Is there a second to that motion? John seconded that motion? Further discussion on that? My screen went blank, so, there you go. Now, I've got more stuff. Seeing none other, seeing no other discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you for all the time this morning.
Okay, item number 10. Maybe we can take 10 and 11 together?
10 and 11 concurrently. It's a rezone, which was continued from two meetings ago, to be heard in conjunction with an initial plan development. The rezone is from general commercial district to light industrial district. The plan development is to allow a storage area. Notice, again, zoning to the south is low-density residential district. It's in a commercial corridor. Currently undeveloped, there are two billboards. Mixed-use commercial revitalization corridor, arterial street. Here is the site plan submitted. There were a number of issues that were brought up to be addressed with the initial plan development, first being traffic. No new approaches are proposed along East St. Patrick Street. However, there's the existing approach which is used for those billboard signs. Second is landscaping buffer was suggested. It's shown as a 25-foot wide buffer. However, there are a number of issues with it. First issue is it's not sufficient points for light industrial district. Second issue is if they're going with a 75% buffer or 100% non-irrigated buffer, but it looks like they're doing the irrigated buffer, it has to extend 75 feet along the adjacent, the side property lines, which is not shown. So, we're suggesting that if you're looking to approve this, that the site plan or the landscape plan be brought in, either asking for the exception or showing it in compliance with the landscape ordinance. In addition, landscaping is shown in that little parking area, which shouldn't be there. And then, we're suggesting that some of the plants which are identified are not suitable for this climate zone and that some of the plant species put in are not suitable along arterial streets. And that the applicant coordinate with the Parks Department and the Urban Forester on selecting appropriate landscaping for in that buffer. Signage and lighting, the applicants indicated that there is no additional signage proposed, other than the two existing billboards, which will remain. And that lighting will be brought in with a final plan development and should be all interior to the site. The fourth issue, a six-foot-high chain-link slat with slats fence is proposed with a setback of 25 feet. Once I take you through some photos, we'll see what they have existing out there today. Another issue that we had with this is securing access to the property, since no approaches are identified along East St. Patrick Street, that prior to submittal of a final plan development, that either an access easement or a developmental lot agreement be recorded and brought in with the application to secure access to these properties, not from East St. Patrick Street. Sorry, these are some superfluous pages. This is, again, looking from that east side of the property into into the actual property itself and the existing billboard signs. Again, looking at the other billboard sign and the area which would be landscaped. Residential to the south and the East St. Patrick Street to the west. And again, that residential. And there is an on-sale liquor establishment located on the adjacent property to the east. And again, Johnson Ranch to that southeast, which is going to be developed with commercial and low and high-density residential. That Valley Sports Bar. Looking interior to the property and the adjacent properties to the north and the type of storage which would be taking place on this property. Again, looking north into that adjacent property. And the existing fencing located on the adjacent property to the west. And this is chain-link with slats or covering on it, which is probably similar to what they're proposing. So, if the planning commission determines that the proposed initial plan development is suitable, staff recommends that it be approved with stipulations noted in the staff report and in conjunction with the rezoning, and that the rezoning be approved in conjunction with the initial plan development. If you want, I can bring that site plan back up. If you want, I can bring that site plan back up. If you have any questions for staff, let me know, the applicant is in the audience.
Thanks Fletcher. And I do have a speaker request for Janelle Fink on this item, or actually, item 10 and 11.
Janelle Fink with Fiscal Land Surveying. I appreciate all of your patience and time today, and I will try to be as brief and concise as I can. But for the benefit of the record, and we have at least one Planning Commission member that was not here a couple of the four weeks ago when we addressed this before, this request is in regard to a rezone for Waste Connections to expand their existing operation. There are currently two vacant lots on St. Patrick Street that they would like to acquire and utilize as storage. We talked last time about Waste Connections serving close to 20,000 commercial and residential members in our community. They're a business that has 55 full-time employees with an annual payroll of $2.9 million. Their total revenues are $16.8 million, and they make direct payments to our landfill in the amount of $4.3 million per year. In addition, they collect and pay sales tax. The lots that you're looking at were originally platted in 1976. Waste Management or Waste Connections has occupied or used their five lots for nearly 40 years, or in an entity that preceded Waste Connections. Those two lots have remained vacant for that 40 years. We did our homework last time. The item that you're seeing here in front of you, these are the two lots in question. We secured the consent or approval of the two immediate adjoining neighbors, which are Brett and Sandra Estes, excuse me, Estes, and then Epic Outdoor Advertising, that they had no objection to the change in zoning and use for those that abutted their property. We talked about the importance of allowing existing businesses to be able to expand in our community, and the importance of using our infill resources. And we referred to comments that had been made by Councilman Salomon a couple of months ago about how important it is to allow our businesses to grow our tax base, either through newer growth of existing businesses, and as well as Councilman Scott talking about how important it is to use our infill lots and not push growth elsewhere. We also talked about the economic and environmental impacts of a forest relocation outside of this area, and the convenience of this location for them. A couple of other things that we talked about. Oh, thank you, my graphics came out a little better. I worked real hard with my printer on this. I want to talk to you about this triangle here that you see, that's bordered by Highway 44 in the north, Valley Drive on the east, East St. Patrick Street, and then Creek Drive. This area is comprised of almost 230 acres. Roughly 70% of that development is light industrial, close to 30% of it is public use, which contains our soccer fields, softball fields, and then flood hazard. The other 5% is comprised of, roughly 5% is comprised of two residential lots on Creek Drive, and then a very small portion of general commercial lots. So historically, this area is a significant light industrial area. When you break that down a little closer, and you count or you add up all of the light industrial that actually abuts these two lots that we're going to be using, there's nearly 70 acres of existing light industrial zoning and use that is immediately adjacent to this, and has been used in that fashion for many years. Another precedent that we didn't show or see in the graphic is, this is our two lots right here. This parcel just to the south on St. Patrick Street, up until 2009, was zoned general commercial. In 2009, Planning Commission and City Council rezoned that three-acre parcel to light industrial. And they did that with a plan development designation. In 2010, they approved an initial and final plan development to allow that three acres to be used for an asphalt surfacing company for their office and for storage of their equipment, vehicles, and the materials that they use, as well as for RV sales and storage. And this particular zoning actually abuts the residential property that we see here. It's not across the street, it's directly next to it. And that's within the last 10 years that this has occurred. In regard to the proposed landscape plan that we had, we talked about the short notice. We had a day to put this together to meet that submittal deadline. To use the property as storage, it's my understanding that it, only a building permit is going to trigger the development requirement for the final plan development, or trigger the landscaping requirements, or things that you would see, parking, circulation, all those things that go along with a normal final plan development. What we've shown you here is a buffer that provides much more screening and pushes that back and provides that visual buffer from St. Patrick Street. So the things that you were seeing in the photos, that Fletcher showed you, those storage areas, you're not going to see that by this landscaping. If we need to adjust the amount of landscape, or the amount or the plant material, those are easy adjustments to make. The question is about in terms of access. These parcels are, will be under the same ownership as Waste Management, so we don't see that you need to provide access under common ownership. People that own six or seven lots in downtown Rapid City, that buildings occupy seven or eight lots, they don't give themselves an access easement between lots. When you're under common ownership, and in fact, it seems almost, Carly can maybe correct me, sometimes you don't grant yourself an easement, you need to have two separate parties. My understanding is, is that granting an easement to yourself is considered not necessarily appropriate. So the common use should mean that there is real no accessibility issues here. We also talked about trying, the comment about putting landscaping or screening on the sides, we actually examined that particularly along Valley Sports Bar. You create an unusable strip there, or that people will be parking up against. Currently, there's no curb and gutter along Valley Sports Bar, it's their back parking lot area. And so, they don't have any physical barrier. If you put landscaping there, it collects, it would have a tendency to collect trash. It wouldn't be as visible to other areas, becomes a maintenance problem. And then, most certainly along the side here, where the other property is in common ownership by Waste Management, you're screening between your own ownership, which doesn't make very much sense. As this property should develop, they're ready to come forward with a building permit, happy to come forward with a final plan development with more defined information. At this point, all they want to do is store in it and screen from St. Patrick Street. We believe that the history of use of the area supports this. Councilman Robertson, Councilman Drew, who were not able to attend or stay for the meeting, stopped and told us that they support this action. And without beleagering it, we hope that you will, based on the history of use and what we've provided, support the rezone and support the initial plan development at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. I guess I'd like to start off, one, this difference between using the lot as storage immediately, and then triggering other things to happen with a final plan development. Could you explain that, Vicky? Just the, what can we expect to see happen?
So, at the last time this was heard, there was some concern from Planning Commissioners. Obviously, staff did not support this. It's not in compliance with the future land use plan entrance corridor, et cetera. And Planning Commission said, you know, if we do this as a plan development, if we see that we've got screening, if we've got some landscaping to keep up the aesthetics, then we're good to go. When they finalize these plans based on the stipulations as noted in the initial, a final plan development will be brought in. They could not start using that property until that final plan development is approved, and it's acted on by Planning Commission. Since Planning Commission directed us to look at a landscape plan, you'll see a stipulation in there that says that the landscape plan needs to meet the landscape regulations, or call it out as a part of a final. And I certainly think that that's something, based on the fencing, we could support, because everything's going to be on the outside of that fence. And that's the aesthetic that I think Planning Commission was looking for and were looking for. As far as whether or not you have to secure access, when you own all the adjacent property, just like these two lots are purchased, these two lots could be sold in the future, they're transferable. We're saying as a part of this plan development, no access off of St. Patrick Street. So to develop this and use it, you've got to come from an internal source. In the past, if there is no provision to create an access easement, which we've created several from one lot to another over the years, then the other option would be to enter into a developmental lot agreement, that gets recorded at Register of Deeds, that says these two lots and the other two lots or three lots that are around it are all owned by the same entity, and will continue to be developed and operated as one, so that in the future, they don't get sold, someone buys them and says, "How do I get access? What do you mean, I can't come off of St. Patrick Street?" So there's different provisions of how we could secure that access as a part of the final. But again, the direction that we received is no access from St. Pat, and we would see that as a part of the final, and we'd work with them on what that might look like.
Thank you. Karen?
Thank you. I struggle with this, because I obviously didn't approve the idea to put this there to begin with, and that's obviously because of the residential area that's not just there today, but the one that's going to be their kitty corner from this property. And I think there's going to be more traffic, and I've stated all those things before, so I'm not going to restate all that issue. I also noticed that the setback for this property, this property goes right to the road itself. There's not a, let's see, there's not a separation, there's not a buffer between the road and this property. You know what I'm saying, Vicky? It's not that.
The boulevard area, you've got pavement sidewalk property.
Yeah, there is not that there. There's not that setback for future development of the road. And if the city grows and this property grows, and that road needs to be improved, we don't have the ability to get that extra setback, because it has to be platted. Is that correct? You can't get that setback unless it's platted, unless we take that land?
Right-of-way is, by standard, dedicated as a part of the subdivision of the property. If there were a street project, we would have to buy the right-of-way if they weren't plating.
That's what I meant. That's what I was trying to say. And so, the 25-foot setback that would be for landscaping would not actually be there anymore, because we would take that property away. The other question I had was on, in the staff report, it mentioned something about a sidewalk. Are they planning to put a sidewalk up there?
Let me pull up the graphic.
Maybe I could clarify for you. There actually is a boulevard area between the back of the curb and the existing property line that's about approximately, I want to say, 10, 11 feet. So there's an additional 10, 11 feet. We've shown a future sidewalk, a building, there's no sidewalk there today, but a building permit would trigger the sidewalk installation. So we've just shown the ability to put the sidewalk there.
Okay, so if you put the sidewalk there, then you want to put some gravel beside that, and then flowers or trees?
Well, we were proposing to do a little bit of a rock mulch up against the sidewalk, just because people walking back and forth sometimes encroach into the landscaping. So yes, between the sidewalk, that 25-foot buffer, we'd have probably, I think it's like, what did we said, seven to 10-foot of a rock mulch before you had 16 to 19-foot of your landscaping buffer. But the total 25 feet would not be built in, so it'd either be rock mulch or the vegetation.
Okay, so when you come back with your final, are you going to show the sidewalk and the rocks, and then the landscaping?
The sidewalk and the rocks and the landscaping are shown on there. The proposed sidewalk is located just north of the existing approach. Am I doing this? Ha, 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 there we go. Okay, the approach is here. This is the curb line. This is the sidewalk that would be proposed. This is the rock mulch. This is the landscaping in here.
Okay, that clarifies that. So the only question for me is whether to support this or not. And I support the fact that you're doing additional work, and you're going to make this a better-looking place. And so, the question, if I do vote no, it's not because I don't support the, what you're doing, it's because I don't support the project as a whole. So just so that's clarified, so, thanks.
Mike?
I stated, I believe, the last meeting, that there's some concerns, and one of the things that happens is we have a comprehensive plan, and we're building towards it, and to Karen's point there, I think we need to continue to look towards that. And I don't know if this goes into that comprehensive plan, and I think at some point, the businesses have to buy into that comprehensive plan, so that we can move forward with it, and not make it where it's the law, but it's more what the city's going towards. And at some point, I think that the business will have to move, because, or, the city will change how it's moving, one or the other. And so, part of our job as planners is to try to help with what we're given, the planning that's given to us. And to Karen's point again, I think this is not necessarily in the planning, and it makes it tough to vote for it. It's something that you bought a while back, and it's something that you own, and you had the plan to develop it. I just don't know if, I guess I would challenge a little bit if the businesses can look at it and make a plan to move to the area where this might be more appropriate in the comprehensive plan. And it's a tough decision. The business has done everything it should do. It's a matter of being at the right place at the right time, and that's really what it comes down to, I think.
Rachel?
Thank you for the considerable effort you put into that. I think it's, you know, I had kind of hoped to prevent having to put in that effort, because I think the core of the issue is that this is encroaching into, you know, an area that we're looking for the future to be more residential, more commercial and retail, and less industrial. And so, you know, while there's a huge precedent for it to be industrial and light industrial in that area, it's just not the way that we're hoping for it to move. I do have a question about the hours that trucks are operating, that, you know, I know residential sanitation trucks probably operate during, you know, generally daytime hours, but I believe commercial, for, commercial pickup, they operate at all hours of the day and night, don't they?
Bob can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding was, is that you have different shifts that go out in the morning, starting at around 4:00 a.m. and a 5:00 a.m. shift that goes out for residential collections. So they would be exiting the property, kind of probably in groups at roughly those two intervals, and then maybe later on, and then they typically return. Some of them come back and forth during the day, but the majority of the route sale, route deliveries, or not deliveries, pickups come back to the yard at the end of the day.
Do we have any sort of idea of how many trucks would be entering before, say, 8:00 a.m.?
Did you say you had around 25 vehicles, service vehicles, Bob?
That's correct.
Yeah.
An exit between 4:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And then the other question I have is, you know, I think, we were talking about that side buffers, or the side vegetation. I think that would be really essential going forward if we were to approve this, just because, you know, I think that does kind of create, as you're driving by, you know, that would also shield it. But I think, I couldn't really support this just based on the residential property that's nearby, and the direction that we're headed as a city, hopefully. So, thank you.
Kurt?
Oh, a little loud. Sorry. Can we do this without a rezone, or does it have to be rezoned?
It has to be rezoned to have the outdoor area of storage.
You couldn't just do a plan development overlay on the general commercial?
That would be like getting a variance to a land use, and that's not allowed.
Okay.
And I want to just thank Janelle for, she acknowledged that, and she brought in the right applications.
the right applications.
Okay.
I don't have any other speaker requests up. At this point, I'd probably look for a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, the initial plan development, the rezone is being approved in conjunction with the initial plan development, and the initial plan development is being approved with stipulations. Thank you.
So, we're taking items 10 and 11 together, basically? So, Sullivan made the motion here, seconded the motion. Any discussion on that motion to approve with stipulations? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Roll call, I think.
Caesar? Bowman? Braun?
Yes.
Her? Hughes?
Yes.
Kwasny? Sullivan?
Yes.
Up four to three. Motion passes.
Item number 12.
Very quickly, item number 12 is the preliminary subdivision plan to create the two lots that we spoke about when discussing the variance for the Guthries. I had it on non-consent in case the applicants wanted to withdraw it if the variance was denied, but also wanted to point out that even though you denied the variance, a stipulation says if they want to proceed, because remember, preliminary subdivision plan is just a what-if, one of the requirements is that they would need to either get the variance or the plat couldn't happen. You denied the variance. They can appeal your decision to a circuit court of law, so that hasn't, that remedy has not yet been exhausted. So, our recommendation is to approve the preliminary subdivision plan with stipulations, noting that if they don't seek remedy through the courts, then in essence, they cannot proceed with the plat.
Why wouldn't we do that?
Well, because they could appeal it. You certainly have the option of denying it. There's no reason to deny without prejudice anymore. We used to do that years ago so you didn't have to resubmit fees. Found out we can't waive fees, and this doesn't have a fee anyway, so it's just, either you would approve it with stipulations or deny it.
Okay. John votes for, made the motion to deny item 12. Karen seconded that motion. Discussion on the motion? I'm not seeing any. All those in favor of denying item 12, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion's denied.
Mr. Chair, based on the lateness of the hour, why don't you let us work on a better date to bring you that presentation by Carla?
Sounds great.
So, I think we're done.
Okay, look for a motion to adjourn. John made the motion, Karen seconded the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Thanks for sticking with it, everybody.